All those work sessions have not proceeded according to the order. The application given by Mr. Gary Stewart and played led by Mr. Keith Smith.
We pray with Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every blessing you've given us. We ask now that you watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you watch over the citizens and all the employees of the city of Scottsboro. Watch over our military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard God and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for alcohol license for Jimmy Cobble doing business at the pond. There is a time in place for a public hearing in the application of Jimmy Cobble doing businesses at the pond. Ms. Phillips, will you share the particulars, please?
The applicant is Jimmy Cobble, regular business name G.G. and L.C., L.L.C. Type of glass in this restaurant, retail liquor class one, doing business at the pond, located at 2299 woman, John T. Reed Plaza, Suite E. There are five businesses that have had objections that nears church and school kids requirements are met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections are pending. Final inspection and zoning verification proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Are those who, in addition to the applicant here, in favor of this particular application? Any in support? Are there any opposed to this application? If any, this concludes the public hearing. Jimmy, we'll have a second hearing next week at the council session. Next is to discuss resolution to the Supply Street, uh, the overflow street department equipment. Eddie, that's a land fryer cutter. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
It's one of our main bushhogs. We've already replaced it with some of the money that the council provided last year. So, we're gonna need now to replace some of the mowers. We'll try to find this up close and use some money to purpose some mowers.
Anybody have any questions? Eddie, we'll put it on next week. Next is to discuss RecCom software program. Clint, that's, uh, that's you if you want to come up. If you remember, we discussed software package for the RecCom year before last, but that cost for that, we projected to be about eighty thousand dollars a year. Clint's been working on research for options for that. You want to tell us a little bit about what you found, Clint?
Yeah, so we found an option that'll basically cost us about ninety-two hundred dollars to start off with this year. And then from thenceforth, it'll be seventy-seven hundred dollars a year. And it basically covers all our bases.
You want to tell them a little bit about what's in that package? They have a description there.
Yeah, sure thing. So, with that package, it comes with basically lead manager, membership manager, stuff for point-of-sale applications. I mean, it controls reservation, membership management. It does pretty much anything that we would want to do there at the RecCom. Basically, it just takes all the boxes we had for software that we need.
And the discussion we had this weekend, it'll even have apps where, you know, they'll get notifications for games and things like that.
Yeah, so like if we have somebody that's signed up for T-ball and they decide to cancel practice, the coaches will be able to push out notifications to, you know, everybody that's involved with that, tell them the updates and everything, so... And the whole idea behind it is it not just helps our community, it helps our employees and administration of the RecCom kind of get a view of what, how well they're doing, what they're doing, and keep up with all of it as well, so...
And my understanding also is right now their ability to take that is somewhat limited.
Yeah. That's hard to imagine.
Yes, zero.
So, this would solve that issue also?
Well, yeah. So, they'd be able to do credit card, debit card transactions pretty much anywhere. So, this is cloud-based. They can use it at all the ball fields. They can use it anywhere they go.
And if my calculations are correct, we're looking at a five-year cost structure of about forty thousand dollars. That's half of the package that we're looking at originally.
Yeah. And that's what, I did do some research on the rates too that we'll get for them for the credit card stuff. And they're at two-point-six percent, twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents per transaction. And then industry standard right now is two-point-nine percent and thirty cents per transaction. So, they actually come in a little bit lower than industry standard. And it's all packaged together, so they have better security doing it that way. They have experience working with it. So, if we have any issue with the payment gateway, we can get in touch with the community past people and they'll handle all of that stuff for us.
Anybody have any questions?
This will also be deposited into our lump to bank account.
I mean, it'll all happen. Every two days, I think, we'll get a deposit for everything they've made, so... But yeah, it definitely does everything we need to do. And I think it's very needed. The last upgrade on software for the RecCom, to give you all an idea, was done in 2002. So, right now, the RecCom's sixteen years behind.
Um, I know this was emailed out, Clint, to give the council opportunity to digest this. I'd like to say it for the next work session again. And if anybody has any questions, if not, we'll look into following it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss patrol vehicle acquisition. We've been meeting with the chief and Mr. Weaver and things. We have basically two problems that we're trying to solve. One is maintenance cost. We, like, over a four-year period, we've got a total department maintenance cost of a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars over four years. Uh, the issue that brought this to a head is eight of those vehicles are ninety-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars of that, of that cost. So, we've got eight patrol vehicles that are costing us well over half of what our total total department cost is. The chief and I have worked it forward and backwards and sideways and looked at... The additional problem that we have is the practice on is hot seating. I've done some research over the last couple of weeks and have included in your package some articles, one from the city of Birmingham, uh, from a few years ago that was doing, that was doing this practice and the cost structure that it was costing them. So, the chief and I have looked at acquiring thirteen new vehicles. This would, uh, this would give each officer, or I should say each shift, a vehicle to run. We looked at, we looked at doing, replacing all of those patrol vehicles with the Dodges. That cost structure was about nine-hundred thousand dollars, uh, or about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year if we financed that. We just couldn't find a way that we felt good about doing all of them. The chief points out that we've made a significant investment in these, in these cars. So, I guess the, the interim solution would be to add the thirteen now, but have an eye towards the fact that over the next few years, we need to be looking at a way to replace those, those chargers that are causing such a maintenance cost there. We'll take care of part of that through taking some pressure off of those vehicles. We'll, we'll stop running them, you know, twenty-four-seven. So, hopefully, that will save some maintenance costs. But the, the fact still remains that you've got old vehicles with, they've got a hundred-and-seventy to two-hundred-and-ten thousand miles on them. Is that correct?
Yes.
If we do a short-term finance on those vehicles, the scenario that the chief and I have discussed is the city paying the vehicle for it and he, uh, his discretionary buddies paying for the computers and outfitting those said vehicles. Our projection for that would be approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars a year for a six-year period for the city. And the chief would have about twenty-five thousand dollars a year that he would contribute out of his discretionary money. That will get us thirteen new Tahos. We've looked at other options, as well documented. General Motors actually this year stopped producing any police package cars. They only do Tahos and, is it two versions of a Tahoe? They do two vehicles, I can't remember.
Two-wheel driving, four-wheel driving.
The other options, we have the fear that we would be in the same situation that, uh, that the vehicles wouldn't, wouldn't survive long-term.
Problematic, yes.
So, we feel like that we can get twelve to fifteen years possibly of service out of these, out of these vehicles. The Tahos are just designed to last so much, so much better. I would, I would entertain any questions or thoughts in the area. What I would like to do is ask Mr. Weaver to draft a RFP for our local financial institutions to have for the council next week so we can send it out to our banking folks and see what the rate would be for them. I think that interest rates are probably not going to be this low for a while again, so I'd like to get something locked in, Mr. Weaver. If you'd ask him, chief, you, you said that you checked on delivery on vehicles and they, they felt pretty confident about being able to... We'd, we'd probably like to see a ninety-day window of the, of locking in the rate for that, Mr. Weaver. He can next.
I'm speaking regarding to that now, what was that like?
Ms. Debbie, we're, we're in the council meeting here on the delegation, so... Next, we'll move to discussing the retirement incentives. Keith, you want to talk about that?
Well, again, as we talked about other than that, we looked at doing it at five-hundred dollars per year for every year as long as we're vested. And we talked at one point about stopping at twenty-five and then, and some of us think maybe we're gonna need to stop it at twenty-five if we're gonna... It's important which way it goes, but if you got twenty-five, do twenty-five. If you got thirty, do thirty, whatever. But some of us are having thoughts about the every-two-year thing. I know we're... As most people in private business who does such a thing as a, a buyout or to buy, to get people to retire early and give them some money to do so, they're doing that normally to reduce the workforce. But this city has never done it that way. When we, we do this and people leave and take, take this money, we replace them with new hires or someone who is in a special age and keep the same number of people. One, one of the concerns that a number of people are talking me about is that if you do it every two years from this point forward, then there is no incentive for you to really leave. If you get twenty-five years and you might want to wait till that two years, but you know it's going to happen again and then when you get paid twenty-seven. And then, when you get to that, you might want to wait till you get two more years and then two more and then two more. And, and every year, do that more than once a year. So, I, I'm not saying we need to go with it or against that, a bigger plan, but we certainly need to talk about it a little more before we do that. You know, there's a lot of people in the last twenty years who didn't get what we're offering if we pass this, what we're offering this time. If you have twenty-five years, that's twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars. If you have, if we do it thirty years, it's just more. And, and there's a lot of people, including myself, and I'm not such a, I don't care about that, but some like nothing because there was a ten-year span at one time. There've been different years spanned. So, I guess the gist of the whole situation is if you want to get this, then when it's offered, take it. And knowing that you're not going to be assured of this, when it's going to happen again. But then, if you want to stay on that, it'll probably happen again somewhere along the way and then you can grab the thing. But if you don't want to stay, and there are some who didn't want to stay this time, but they are until this is settled. So, basically, to my, I think we come to conclusion, uh, five-hundred a year for every single year you have with the city. And that's with the city. That doesn't mean you are somewhere else on state retirement for ten years, comes in the city. And then we'll pay you ten years for that. We'll pay you five-hundred a year for that ten years, because that's not a part of the deal. Part of the deal is working with the city of Scottsboro. And I think that's unfair. And I think Patrick might want to leave and worry a little bit on the...
I was going to call Aaron to discuss what we had covered in the committee.
I've always, as the commissioner of future council, for retired years, you know, if you're going to make it a recurring thing, I think you might as well just call it a raise instead of an incentive. I do like the fact of, of removing the cap. I think somebody that's put thirty-five years in for the city versus somebody that's put twenty-five years in, I think they should be rewarded for that service. And I think it's been, in the past, it's been capped.
It has.
I like, I like the idea that, have we considered giving a, a window of, you know, if we're not going to commit in the future, which we don't know what the financial status will be in the future. Fortunately, you know, the economy is good and we, and we've benefited from that. But have we looked at maybe giving a window if you, if you're not eligible now? If you become eligible in the next twelve months or whatever, making that available to them?
I guess the big problem is how do you set when that would be?
Somebody only they get left out.
What we had talked about was if, if we did offer, and certainly get away from retirement incentive to call it a, it's a service award for years of service. But it would be, um, you would have to sign up within either thirty or sixty days and state the date that you were looking to separate or retire within the calendar year of 2018. So, that, of course, you're not going to get the money till you leave. So, if you back out, you don't get anything anyway, or if you change your mind. But it would be for the calendar year of 2018.
Are you talking about just doing that for this one tax? Or are you talking about years after?
Well, we've talked about it both ways.
Well, I, I think, uh, I think that we deserve to have an answer sooner rather than later. So, what I would, I know we've got a draft of a resolution. What I would ask is if, if, Mr. Mayor, you and I, Mr. Smith, can sit down and finalize that? And let's put it on the agenda for next week. And if it, if it flies, that's good. If not, we'll revisit it at a later date. Next is to discuss Fleming Road project. You have in your package, the bids were open last week on this project. You see there that the, uh, the total bid amount, if we're the A-trip fund or bank portion, our portion of that project is an estimated three-hundred-one-thousand-two-hundred-twelve dollars for that, for that project. So, we'll put the, we'll put the bid approval on next week's agenda. Josh? Is there a contingency in this plan? Is there, you know, is, is our, is our match, is that pretty much a fixed number we feel like? Or are we going to be back here having a conversation about it?
We're going to write the state a check by February twenty-first for three-oh-one-two-twelve and change, or they're not awarded contract. So, when we get into the project, you know, we may be, we may come up on something. We may need to come back and, but anything over that, they're going to split eighty-twenty. So...
So, they'll pay eighty percent of it, we'll pay twenty percent of any of it, which is...
Oh, it runs a hundred thousand, it will be twenty thousand. Which, it is likely that we're going to get some of that.
Do they, you said they're never going to award it yet, that we have a projected start date for that project?
It takes about ninety days to get the contract in order from the bid date.
Any other questions in common?
And the total award would be one day of five-hundred-six-thousand-sixty dollars and ninety-one cents. The state will pay any percent, the federal folks will pay any percent. And the city will pay three-hundred thousand.
Get it right. Moving to the delegation, Ms. Mathis.
Ms. Mathis, and I'm a realtor here in Scottsboro. And I'm here in support of Ralph Dawson, the police department. And I think it's been many, many, many years, over the years, that we've seen the need for police cars. I'm not real sure why we haven't had a public hearing about police cars. You know, public service is one of two things, where you're elected or you serve under the elected officials. And the majority of the people in this room are serving under the elected officials, whether it is our fire department, our police department, our rec department. Those people deserve the equipment that they need in order to function on a daily basis. And if we have Sandy Hook, or we have a Benton, Kentucky incident, the fire department, the police department will be the one, not two. They're one. And we need to support this police department, the police department. Yeah, I, I am here in the community. I sell this town daily. Number two, I have a business. I've had, my business has been broken into. So, therefore, I've needed them. Nine-one-one, yep, needed them too. So, you know, this community works towards your elected officials to take care of what we need. And they shouldn't have to beg for any cars. I have a son-in-law that's a policeman. His car burned, you know, so we shouldn't have to, to beg. Ralph Dawson had to beg for police cars. Keith Smith's been there. And I understand that we have a new type of cardio thing that the fire department has, which is awesome. So, we want to lose Jackson County, is it not? To the tune of about these ten thousand dollars. So, I'm here to support them because, you know what? You guys, they make the PD twenty-seven thousand to forty-seven thousand a year. And the fire department, twenty-seven to fifty-eight thousand a year. They're underpaid, you understand? They're underpaid. Least we can do is give them the equipment to go forward to do their job. You, you guys have the knowledge and you have the wisdom. You have the knowledge of what this town needs. And we expect your future leadership to get more than that.
Thanks, Ms. Mathis. Mr. Duke?
Thank you for hearing me. I'm representing the Scott, Scottsboro Jackson County Cruiser's Car Club. And I'm speaking in support of an application we've given the city for two thousand dollars to continue to award the first Saturday cruise in Scottsboro. Last year, the city supported us in this cruise in, uh, some of four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Luckily, not luckily, but with a little planning, we only need two thousand this year. The purpose of the, well, the purpose of me talking about last year's cruise in, they were a big success. We averaged about eighty cars that each crewed in. Uh, we had seven cruise ends. We had, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight different cars that attended one or more of the cruise ends. They had to register the car to be eligible to win the cash award that we did away. So, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-eight that registered. There were probably some that didn't register. Uh, they came from fifty-two different cities and four different states. Majority of those people attended more than one cruise in. The restaurants in the area benefited greatly from those. If you try to get in a restaurant near one of those cruise ends, you don't know how much they benefited from, from those people being there. We also had a lot of spectators. We, we don't know how many because we didn't register spectators, but we had a lot. Uh, that saved probably fifty, at least, to every cruise in. Our numbers were down some because we had three cruise ends that had significant rain amounts, and one that had a Alabama, Florida State football game. Supposed to be the game of the century, turned out not to be great, but...
That's under your respect, you know.
Anyway, that was two thousand and seventeen. We consider it a success. In two thousand and eighteen, we want to do about the same thing again. Where our promotions are again cash prizes. We can weigh one-hundred dollars three times at each cruise in, a blind drawing of all the cars that are registered. Once you register, your name stays in the bucket for the whole year. So, if you get ten, seven cruise ends, you get seven chances to win. That's insidious for people to keep coming back. And you have to be present when you can. You can't not be there and win on a pass ticket in the bucket. Uh, that seemed to work real well last year. We're going to do it this year. But we're not asking the city to supply all that much. We're going to, some of our merchants supply seven-hundred dollars. So, we're just asking the city for two thousand. Our total expenses will be two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars this year. Our advertising this year, we're going to do flyers for the club members and out at different car shows in, in the area. We're also doing direct emails because last year we got contact information from everyone that had registered. So, now we have their email address. So, we'll contact them directly via email. Uh, we'll also use very new paper articles. We're getting some free advertising from local car enthusiast newsletters and websites. And our biggest advertiser is Facebook, which is free. A location for this year's cruise in will be, again, the parking lot between Fifty Taters and the New Busted Restaurant.
Like Cobble pointed out that that's going to be the pond.
Fifty Taters and the pond were very much supportive of the cruise in and wanted it continued. Also, the other businesses in that shopping center were supported. We will, because of the change in the parking lot, we will have to go around in front. Probably some of our parkings and bedcocks supporting of that also. Like I said, we, there are nine restaurants within Walton, Texas, of our cruise ends. So, that, that helps one get cars in and it helps the restaurants. The Jackson County Cruisers don't benefit in any way from the cruise in. It's totally to support Scottsboro and to bring people in Scottsboro. The only minor benefit we give is we do sell some fifty fifty tickets to support our charity during the cruise. None of the money the city gives us goes to support that charity. Uh, we have submitted an application with the city for this tourism funding. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
What we'll do, Ralph, is first of all, I appreciate... What we'll do, Ralph, is first of all, I appreciate the work that you've put into that. I can't, uh, I can't remember anybody coming and asking for less than half of what they got the year before. So I appreciate that. But I appreciate the work that you guys have done. You've made that a successful, I'll be in. What we'll do is we'll put it on a workshop where any questions that anybody has, and then we'll put it on the next, the next meeting. Okay? Thank you. Al?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just want to tell them it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve this great city we live in for the past twenty-five years. I've been asked by the people who are up for retirement or coming up for retirement to represent them. And, uh, we just want to say thank you all for what you're considering doing for us and everything. Let y'all know that we appreciate it very much and the hard work and work that y'all do.
Please, the reports. Mr. Mayor?
A couple of things, back to the police department. I think you got some information in your package. But they recently received a grant through a DECA for twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be used for four new control PCs, computers for their cars. Uh, this is going in existing, it wouldn't go towards any new purchases. And then we're also, he and I, Ralph and I, have discussed, uh, possibly another avenue for some grants for new purchase, uh, new vehicles if we purchase new ones. So, uh, just want to report on that. There's been a lot of discussion the past year or so about Main Street, uh, Meg, hipper's our new, she wears a lot of hats. Marketing and events and so on and so forth. She's been to a couple of meetings and been in contact with them. They would like to, uh, come and and do a presentation and answer questions either March fifth or March nineteenth at five o'clock is what we had proposed, which would be an hour before the work session. Those are two work session dates. It's about a thirty-minute presentation in the Meg PowerPoint and the question and answer about the program. And, uh, so be thinking and let us, she or I, know which date. One of those two would work to to hear a presentation from them. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all for being here and thank you, um, Al, for your years of service. Thank you for supporting my support and the hard work and all that, and, um.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, Mr. Stewart.
I don't have a lot other than thank you everybody for coming out tonight. And, uh, this morning I got up pretty early, uh, locked the clear, looked outside and the street farms out there. It's raining inside, I appreciate that, and it was hard work out there, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Kim.
I'd like to wish council member Smith a happy birthday. I believe he's seventy-four?
No. Seventy-one. Nobody else up here made it that long. We're working towards it every day, but.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
No, I'd just like to thank everyone for being here tonight and appreciate you coming.
Birthday boy, Keith Smith.
Yeah, uh, the only thing I have is many of you, uh, know or knew, uh, Mr. Police Officer John Edmund who worked for me for a long time. They did just the street down below me, uh, and he died sometime back. But about a couple, three hours ago, his widow, Doris, passed away. So I would like for all of y'all to remember his family if you would. She's been quite ill and had a really hard time when he passed away. Finally, today she's come to us. Keep them in your prayers if you would. That's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, I don't have, uh, anything this evening. We will, uh, meet next Monday, what is that, the, uh? Twelve, uh, for a council meeting. With that, I'll intertone the motion to adjourn.
Make it motion.
Mr. Gary Stewart, make some motion if you're so.